George, would you like to give us a prayer?
Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way but leaning your everlasting love. Fathers, if we come together, we ask that you drive our minds together in unity, love and strength, as we handle the business of the city of Inkster. And most of all, Father, that we can continue to do business with love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Okay, roll call.
Will believe, excused, absent, Howard.
Here.
George Williams.
Here.
Oh, counsel, okay, George Williams. Regina Washington, excused absent. Watley. Chisholm.
Present.
And Shaw.
Here.
Yeah, we do have a room, okay. Approve or agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, it's been supported in the second. Any, anything on this? No comments, okay. All of the approvals say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. We have no presentation, we have no public hearing. Consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in the second. Any, anyone want to talk about anything on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. We have no boards and commissions? Okay, new business, new clerk.
A, consider approval of special event permitted, the Inkster First Annual Car and Bike Day Party on South River Drive, Saturday, September 16th, from 2:00 p.m. until 8:00.
Okay, so what's your pleasure?
So moved, second.
It's been moved in support, and any comments on this? Okay, are those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Item B?
Consider approval of special event permit for the Commission of Asian Annual Senior Cookout on September 15th, 2023, at Wheatley Park, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved in the second. Any, any, any comments on this? I'm sorry. Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, ayes have it. That was good, that's pretty good. Okay, we are down to public participation. Gloria Alexandria?
Good evening, counsel and all those in attendance. I was here last meeting complaining, and I am back to say I am standing here happy because I live by Lamone Gardens and Parkside, and it has been quiet. And I am most appreciative. My neighbors are happy, and I have not had to duck, you know, to hit the floor for over a week now. So I just wanted to come and stand and say thank you to whoever's responsible.
Police Department. All right, thank you.
And the other thing that I wanted to mention was King Memorial Park. But I understand from my neighbor, because I'd stopped going that way because of the gunfire. I just refused to drive down Andover to Henry Ruff, but I might give it a try now. But prior to the weekend, the weeds were very tall in the park, and we've got this nice, big, beautiful sign outside of the park. But the fence is falling down, and the weeds were high. So if we could just maybe clean it up a little bit and make it better. I'm not, I'm complaining, but then I know that I started out with, you know, the kudos, and it's now back to let's get the park cleaned up. Because the children can't play over there even if they want it to.
Okay.
Which park is she? Clarification of the park?
It's King Memorial Park on Andover, between Carlisle, between Carlisle and.
Okay, is that by Parkside? Is that by Parkside?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my sons used to play baseball there now, years ago. But nobody could play anything over there now.
Okay, thank you. Regina Lewis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My concern is, when we had the bad storm, Inkster siren didn't go off.
Yeah, I know. I was gonna say something about that.
Why? Did some lightning hit, or the wind blow the siren out or something?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say something.
It didn't go off, but that's something that we have to get with the police chief, because he's, he's over there, correct? He's not here. I mean, which, it's the fire chief. Yes, fire chief. Okay, we will ask that fire chief that question, because it didn't go off. So can I get something in the mail saying why, what happened? Yes. Thank you, that was the last question. You know, actually, something will be mailed to you, but actually, that's probably a question that a lot of people probably want answered. So if he's here next council meeting, he can address that as well, okay? Okay, let's, we don't have another storm before then. No, hopefully we won't. Okay, the last question is, when the line persons is cutting the lines for our community, first of all, the police shrubs in front of the police station. I need them trimmed up and looking good with them lights on. And for the street, they do a great job, but they don't, they don't re-wack the outside of the curve. You got all that crap, just, no, that don't look good for Inkster. Let it look good. That's it. You're welcome.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can she give us explanation, the place where she's talking about, about the weeds being at the curve?
By the police station.
Is that by the police station?
Yeah, she talking about the Justice Center.
Justice Center.
Right, right across the street.
Okay, that's, okay, that's where the new, the new building.
I'm talking about the new police station in front of it.
As you're going in the door, you got the shrubs, the weeds coming out of the, you know, it's overgrowth, and it need to be trimmed. You know, if you cut the grass, it, the shrubs need to be trimmed.
So you're talking about this new police station?
Yes, the new police station. And then the curve, when they cut the, when they cut on Michigan Avenue, or wherever, whenever they doing Inkster's cutting, have them to do the outside of the, the street, the curve. Weed whack it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Anthony Sherrell?
Good evening, counsel and attendees. I'm here with a positive note as well. I'm, live over there in Burton, in that District One, where we had the, a lot of the gunfire and all that. So it's been quiet, and they did take action. And I got involved and, you know, asked questions and found out, you know, what they were doing. And thank you, brother. Appreciate it, appreciate it. I mean, we got a long way to go, because I care about where I live. And I don't come to fuss and complain, I just come to try to get something done and be involved. One other thing is that we're getting inundated with animals. And what I mean by animals, you know what I'm talking about. The skunks and the ground, the groundhogs I can deal with. Skunks is the ones that you can't deal with. Because I know in Michigan, it's illegal for the average citizen to put out a trap, because you have to be licensed in order to deal with them, dispose of them, relocate them, whatever you need to do. But if we call in a company, which is what we're supposed to do, they're talking about one trap, one skunk, $250.
Yeah.
And skunks come, mother, father, and then at the beginning of the season, five babies, four babies. Can you imagine what that's like for us homeowners? I got a gazebo, and at 11 o'clock at night, I cannot be outside. The smell is horrible. In the middle of the night, I gotta close my windows, even when I don't want to run the air. I gotta close my windows. Even you run the air, the air comes in through the central air units, and you're smelling that all night long. I got so much air freshener in my house, you guys wouldn't believe.
There's something I was gonna ask the mayor as well, because.
The average citizen can't handle it. There's nothing we can do.
Groundhogs is really, is running rats as well.
They're really bad. And we know where it came from, you know, it comes from the wooded sections where they do work, and they get run out of their habitat. So it's not their fault, it's just, it's just nature, is what nature is. Only other thing is, I had the other question about, they had mentioned last time about the speed bumps. Now, you guys may know where they're gonna be, but we don't. And I know, I don't know when that's gonna be, when that's gonna happen. It says sometime soon, but I don't know who to talk to about that.
It's on the website.
It's on the website now? What streets, what streets and everything over there? Well, okay, okay. Then the other thing, this is for you, Vivis. The, when they do a water and sewage repair, there's a lot of areas where we still got orange barrels and been up there all summer. And I'm talking about a couple of months. And we need, you know, we need to get those taken care of, because some people flying through there. We got one area where it's a bump that comes up about two feet dirt, and then it comes back down. People actually rolled over that and went airborne.
Where is that?
That's on Andover, between Burton and Carlisle, or between Burton and Henry Ruff. It's right at the corner of Lovett, right at the corner of Lovett and Andover. I don't know, you guys got out there and picked up and got all that debris that was left, where people cut shrubs and trees and left it in the street. They got that, but this is right adjacent, right across the street from it. And then we got several other places. We got one on Fox, where they did a water and sewage repair, actually two spots. And orange barrels been out there for two months. They've done the repair, so we're happy with that. You can't drive on that part of the road.
That's why the orange barrels are there.
Yeah, I know, but progress, all we want is progress.
If we complete the restoration part, they'll be.
Yeah, okay. I can accept that for now, but.
That's coming soon.
Okay.
Real soon.
Yeah, but that's why we gotta have a conversation.
All right.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
I think that's it, I just want to thank you guys, because I'm here to say that I'm glad you guys supported us in the things that we need, and we in turn can support you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are in council comments. Councilman Williams?
I'll come back.
No, I'm good.
Can you come back to me for a minute?
Okay, but before I do all of that, I forgot, the city clerk, you have anything?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, city treasurer? Okay, now, okay, you said come back to you? All right, I will, you want me to come back?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you, okay, all right. All right, never mind that. Councilman Chisholm?
Nothing at this time.
Well, I'm sorry, you have something?
Not at this time.
Oh, I forgot you too. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You're not, you're not on here, he just do that, but you're not on agenda. But I'm sorry, you have nothing? Okay. Councilman Shaw?
Madam Chair, I just have one thing. I just wanted to ask about, we got an email concerning Brian from Plant Moran. Now, is Brian, is he just leaving, or is that the whole organization leaving? So are we planning, planning on doing anything with Plant Moran, or any other accounting firm?
Yeah, I'll be working with them up until October 6th, and we already have approached and have actually got a proposal from one accounting firm, and we're gonna put out a RFP for others.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Warren Watley?
I just would like to express the fact that we are the checks and balances for the city. And if we don't, there are only two organizations within the city, Planning and Counsel, that can take action against things when they don't happen correctly in the city. And I just think it's very disappointing that we don't take a more active role in doing that. Because we are empowered to make decisions. We need to start doing that. That's it.
Okay, I have, I have nothing. I don't know, we just have a resident just walked to the door, I don't know, she's filling out something. Since we do have time.
Can I say my name?
Okay, and Councilman Williams, you ready? Okay.
Well, I, I know the person who, who came and made the statement about, over in District One, Two, about the weeds, okay? I, I want that, I want to go on record and know that I did, did investigate the part about the weeds over where you got the empty lot set, okay? That wasn't cut because the simple fact is, it had to be, they sold the land, Inkster sold the land to a contractor, but he didn't have the proper paperwork. So it ended up being Inkster's responsibility, and I think Inkster cut it. I haven't went back, but they cut that over there. Mr. Vivis, over there by Bridgeport, over that way, remember the young lady was, was talking about the weeds was taking over? No, no, Bridgeport, Yorkville, over in that area.
He talking about what?
Where you got the, where you got the inner structures, where you got the inner structure? Right, right, okay, you cut it because.
It belonged to the city.
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I understand, because the mayor said he'd take care of it, and, and, and then he cut. So I want that young lady to know that, see, she never had any problem with the weeds getting cut over there until they had sold the land. So I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, she didn't come back to me about the weeds, you know, she addressed Counsel. So I want to let her know that I did take care of that, because she was the person that always would tell me about things in the area that would go, and we'd take care of it, okay? I was kind of shocked to hear it coming from the audience, instead of coming from her, because she has my personal number and stuff like that, things we have did over there. I have talked with her since, and like I told her, you know, but you know how some of us are, you know, we got something we can run with, we gonna get up and we gonna blast it, okay? But like I'm saying is, I've been working with her over in that area, because somebody, somebody over there, Mr. Vivis, I don't know who it is, but over there back, Crystal Court, they, they throwing a lot of cars over there, no plates and various things, I don't know what's going on. Okay?
I thought when you were saying, I thought you looked at him to get his attention.
I noticed we got a lot of cars, a lot of cars in Inkster, and they've been parked on the street in another area with, with no license plates.
You forward that information to the, ah.
To who?
You forward that information to code enforcement, they'll look into it.
You say you already forwarded to them?
No, he wants you to.
If you forward the, if, if you forward the information to code enforcement, they will address it.
They will take care of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I'll do the letter, the first thing, and they, they say in the morning.
She means she notifies me and let me know.
Okay, because, because we're, we're talking about all the cars down there parked, right? You had the code enforcement, I think she's back there, she can tell you about all them cars that parked, there were no plates on it, on Irene, and that way, Harriet Street, my street, all over there. They got cars over there with no license plates, and they've been there, been doing it all year. So it doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense. Now, now, can someone explain to me? Well, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll put it in writing, because I would like to get some explanation on can, can, can a person park a car inside their fence? Okay, I've been hearing, I got, I got two different opinions. Can a person park a car inside their fence without license plates?
Without a license plate, inside their fence, if it's on private.
Inside their?
Inside the fence, yes, they can.
They can do that? Okay, all right. But that, that's been, that's been one of the big conversations that we got in my area. Okay, come on, let me hear the button.
If they have any plates on it, you need to back it in, so we don't see it. Because if we ride by and see it doesn't have any plates on it, we can put a field notice on there, on their house, because it's in operable, because they can't drive.
Okay. So if they got a plate on there and it's not operable, you can still deal with it? Yes or no, maybe?
She said if.
Has a plate on it?
Yes.
It's in their yard?
Yeah.
It's up today, it's in their yard, it's not under the grass?
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
That's all.
She said she can't deal with that, that's private property. So she can't go up on private property, because it's in their backyard. So she can't deal with that. Now, she ride past the block and she see a car racing the wrong way, and don't have a plate on it, she can deal with that, but she can't go on people's private property. Or they can park their car on their private property, as long as she don't see the plate.
Okay.
That's what she just told you.
Yeah, I know what she just said, I know what you just said, and I've been, and then I've been hearing some other authorities say it different, okay? But I, I can, I get further till I get the right information.
But we are clear, we writing by attorney to make sure we're clear.
You want him to answer, or you, are you done?
No, I, I, no, I'm just saying, it, it's been brought to me about the cars parked in people's yard and stuff there with no plates, some of them got plates, okay?
He's gonna answer it now.
Who's gonna answer?
So as a general proposition, no, we should not be going on private property to, to tag or ticket any person's property.
Right.
If the conditions of the property is such that it creates a blight on the neighborhood, if they have multiple vehicles on their property or not, if the conditions create a blight, we can ticket for blight. But we should not be ticketing just because a car is on private property without a plate, unless it's in blight. There's a difference.
All right.
Okay, you down?
Yeah, I, I need a clarification, that's all.
Okay, you need to say something?
Yeah, I just want to.
Okay, okay, come on.
All right.
Barbara Cooper, for the record.
Yeah, Barbara Cooper, yes, it is. I'd just like to say good evening to everyone, or the board and everyone. Two things, October 21st is the Goodfellas Annual Pancake Breakfast, and it will be at the recreational complex from 8:00 to 12:00. This coming Saturday is the Cardboard City Picnic Reunion. And this is the first year that we have invited Denby, Carver Homes to come to the Cardboard City Picnic. Cardboard City was the original Lamone Gardens, and then they built the new one. And we're including the new Lamone Gardens, from Burton to Henry Ruff, and Denby, and the Carver Homes. I don't know if I said Carver Homes, but old Inkster, that's what we're, we're doing. Having a picnic and a fellowship, so bring your picnic basket, your lounge chair, and come on out and join us this Saturday at 12:00 noon in Inkster Park. Thank you so much, God bless you.
Okay, Rhonda Davis?
Good evening, everyone, city council, Mayor Pro Tim. I'm coming, I don't know if I missed this or not, but we have a stray dog issue going on in the city. I know we don't have currently an animal control officer, but they're running, they're running in packs now. And I've been attacked, my sister's been attacked, and like, for instance, she has two German Shepherds in her backyard. Two pit bulls wanted to fight her dogs that were gated in her fence. The dogs were so violent, they were trying so hard to get through her iron fence, they were bleeding at the nose because they're so vicious. So she took her dogs, put them inside her home. The next morning, this weekend, she opened up her front door, they were on her porch. And so there's no one to call, and they're roaming everywhere. And then we have our own animals, who are our pets, who are in their own backyards, and in their fence backyards, but of course, they can jump fences, and they are attacking our dogs, they are attacking us. And I don't know what we're doing to get someone on board, if we can reach out to other communities to see if we can do some kind of co-share with the animal control officer. But we really have to get this under control. If you're on Facebook, you see people from the city who are constantly saying, hey, anybody know whose dog this belongs to? They're just, they're getting loose, they're roaming everywhere. But the ones that are big, that are vicious, we don't want to wait until someone gets mauled to death or injured before we, you know, take some type of action. So that was my first thing. Secondly, because I know I'm running fast, so, the road construction. I've reached out to the project manager, because my concern was, I live on Penn Street, between Bayham and John Daly. They blocked that off, and I was told that the trucks were allowed to go down the street as long as they weren't hauling anything in the back beds. I have pictures, they're hauling, the, the trucks are full, they have the pipes, and now we're, our road is breaking up. And that was my concern, that they were gonna mess up a road that was completely okay. And now they're causing damage to that part of Penn, because they're using that street to go up and down to John Daly with the pipes and all the things that they're hauling, which are heavy. And if you just go down that part, you'll see the holes and things that they are creating. So I'm hoping, whatever they do to repair the streets when they're completed, that they also include from Bayham, from Bayham to John Daly on Penn Street to repair what they damaged, that wasn't damaged beforehand.
And, and you know, you can get with Mr. Vivis, because, not tonight, but I'm just saying, you can get with him on that clock, because he.
She said she thought the project mattered.
Okay.
Okay. And she was gonna reach out to the, the person on site, because they weren't supposed to take the trucks down there with stuff on the beds. So, but they, they continued to do so every day, they're still bringing, hauling, and so whatever she's telling them, they're still doing whatever they're doing. And the other thing was, they currently told people on John Daly, they cut off the water. Then they put something on the doors to say, run your waters for so long, to make sure they're clear. Well, you have seniors in that, on that street, for instance, my mother, who is blind, and she can't see when the water is clear. And I didn't get any notification, I didn't see that they were cutting off her water, and that they were supposed to run it until it became clear. I was called by a neighbor who helps look out for me. And then I had to run over, you know, like a lunch break, and try to figure out what was going on. But we have to remember that we are a very senior community. And so when we do projects, and when we do something spur of the moment, we have to do a better job of letting the residents know, because someone like myself, who's a caregiver to an elderly parent, we have to watch out for them. And I need to know that in advance. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, and you know, in the answer to your first question, if you see any dogs, just call the police, whether or not we have animal control or not, they can, they will come out, because I've called them. They will come out and catch them themselves. They did it for me on my street, so.
Well, we did call.
Okay.
We did call.
Not to interrupt, but I do want to let everyone know, we did just hire an animal control officer. He picked up his uniform today. His training does start tomorrow.
All right.
Training for animal control officer, I believe, two to three weeks, about two to three weeks, then he'll be out there on the road. But then for the time being, yeah, just call up the Inkster Police Department. We do work with the Rottweiler's Animal Shelter for the dogs that we pick up to bring out there, but sometimes they're full, so sometimes we have to drive like to another neighboring community to do it. But just call the police department for the next two, three weeks, if you see a dog, and they'll, officers will come out. will come out and pick it up.
Well, I've been calling, and no one's come out, and no one's captured these animals, because they're still in both my area and my sister's area, we see them every day, and now we have, I can't ride a bike, I can't walk, I can't do, I can't walk my dog, but I, we call, and I'm the type of person, I'm very proactive, and I consistently call, and she has called this way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to your adjournment now?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second. Okay, all those, um, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, meeting is closed, thank you.